Okay. Do you want to hit the app?
Mm-hmm.
First one is Ron Hilliard. That one's complete. Next one is Doug Adamson. That one is complete. And the third one is Nick Levy. That one is complete.
Good movie.
And the fourth one here is Dale Simpson. And he is asking for us to put a culvert entrance at 1947 Tommy Hawk Road, residential.
Have we been deciding these or make a motion?
You've done both.
Done.
Is that, is that a new one?
Yeah, brand new one.
Then we need a, a motion on that one.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we allow Eric, Public Works Director, to install a residential culvert entrance at 1947 Tommy Hawk Road for Mr. Dale Simpson.
A second.
Any discretion, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, machine carries.
All right. Few things to... So, at the last meeting, I told you that we had hauled off the scrap metal at the landfill. Got the check back. It was $1,145. Just give you an update on that. The low water crossing at 60th and Grand, we poured the deck last Thursday. Went back yesterday, pulled the forms off, and we're opening it up next Thursday, so... Get that little water crossing taken care of. We are crushing it, Beth, except for today. Mother Nature had other plans for us today, so...
There on 60th and Grand, did you have to pour a whole new deck or just partial?
We had to pretty much pour a whole new, not complete, but pretty much, because each time we got ready to cut, it was, it just cracked out and it was in bad, bad shape.
I'm just curious.
Yep. Last week, met with Danny Hurt, Buckley Powder, out of Blake Query, laid out for our next blast, so we can...
Sorry, you might watch that leg on that chair.
Yeah.
I'm not that heavy.
Okay.
Blake Query?
Blake Query, getting ready to start stripping overburden and what have you off of there, so...
Which way will you be going?
We're going east and south.
East and south.
So, along the east wall and going south.
Okay.
So...
Good.
Moving the bulk fuel tank from the Bronson Fire Station to the Union Town Fire Station slash Old Weed Barn for a greater operator who will now be stationed out of Union Town. Did go to Union Town City Commission Meeting and get permission to move that back into the city last week. K-39 Bridge, just kind of a update. They shut K-39 down. We are seeing a few deficiencies with our roads from all the traffic going around. Had to add some more gravel. Have visit with KDOT on it. We'll document all of our loads and no guarantee that we'll get reimbursed back from KDOT, but we are having conversations on that, so... Also, had some traffic going in some areas that we really didn't... Had some semis, I should say, going in areas that... In residential areas and, not that they can't run in residential areas, but we're trying to get them slowed down and/or staying on asphalt if at all possible, so... Anyhow, that's kind of where we're at on that one. And then last here, real quick, the Jayhawk Wind Project. They're still capping Arrowhead, Birch, Calvary, 60th, 50th. So, basically from 39 to 3, kind of that area over there. They're further along than what I originally had said. When I was reporting the 30-some percent, that was for Bourbon County and Crawford County, both combined together. So, they're, I don't know exact percentage yet. Working on getting a percentage, but I would guess them up in the 70% area for capping of our roads. That's strictly a guess on my part, but despite the areas that they've done, I'd say that's where we're at. Did have some reports of washboarding in the area from some of the gravel. They are getting back out and running their graders over that, take care of that for us. Let's see, what else did we have?
Is that cleaner rock working pretty good for you?
Seems to be working real well.
Good.
We did have a bridge deck. Show a little bit of deficiency there on 60th between Arrowhead and Birch. We had their engineers look at it. Our engineer looked at it. Structurally, the engine, or the bridge is fine structurally. It's just the decking had come loose in a spot or two. I think what's going to end up and happen, they're in, they're having discussions now, but they may look at completely rerouting around and going a different route, not using the bridge at all, and maybe not even using one of the roads that's in front of a residence, so...
And that's what, that's the bridge I asked you about the superstructure and from the engineering report, the superstructure is good.
Right, right. So, anyhow, that's kind of an update on that. Also, 20th Street from 39, and I want to say Eagle, going north to the query over there. It originally was not on their plan to maintain that road, but since their trucks are hauling from the query, it's starting to rut a little bit. They're going to go ahead and take that road over for us and straighten it up as well.
Great.
So, that's kind of where we're at there. Any questions for me?
Thanks for getting on that road cut up there on 95th.
Yep.
By, off of range.
Have you made any progress on trucks?
I have not yet.
Okay. Just curious.
Kind of, you had sent us, or sent me a deal on the one down there. We want to go down and look at those first before we do...
At 60 mile an hour, look like a nice truck.
Right, exactly. I know. I had seen some over by Iowa at about the same speed and...
West side there.
Yeah, I don't, we went and looked at those and they're not going to be big enough for what we're wanting to use, so... But we are going to go down to Parsons area here shortly and look at those.
Are you thinking about any other equipment yet? Backhoe, excavator?
Would love to look at a mini excavator. Guys went out, took five or six guys the other day and actually, individual here in town had a mini and put them on them, put them on it at a dirt pile and let them dig and, and they really liked it, so...
What brand is it?
Yeah, that one was a Sani, I believe is what it was, so anyhow.
Okay.
Write a spec up when we get to that point and, and see where we're at. I kind of want to visit on budgets or look budgets over first before we do that.
No, no, when we had the discussion, we said we put in a budget for, for machinery.
Right.
Machinery included a truck and probably a trailer and, of course, if you're going to get a mini, that would just work out perfect.
Right, so... But again, I think let's look budgets over real good. Talked to Susan earlier and what have you, so... Get another week or two and then we'll...
Okay.
See where we're at there and make...
Good.
Have we gotten anything back from the bridges, the engineer company that tested our bridges?
Swab eaten. They, they came in and, and I do have a report back on the select few that they... What do you want to say, inspected this year? I can get you a copy of, definitely get you a copy.
Did you get Eric on the big one up there or?
I don't know if that, I don't recall if that one was in on it. We do have a report from a couple of years ago or what have you on that one, so...
I think were they supposed to inspect that every year, the big one?
And it may be, I believe they were, I'd have to look on our reports to see exactly what, what we got back on that. So, I can get you a report and get it to you next time.
The last one was very detailed on options.
Did you have a chance to talk to Susan about setting up that capital improvement fund?
Not yet, I have not. We, we did talk about setting up a meeting here in the next couple of weeks to go over several items, so we'll discuss that at that time.
You're going to go to the multi-county meeting in Yates Center on Thursday?
Yes.
Anyone else going? If I...
I'll be in there when I was, I'll be in Chicago, so...
Okay.
Say that again, sorry.
It's, it's a multi-county meeting at Yates Center. Is anyone else going besides me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Eric, do you mind if I ride with you?
That's, no problem.
Okay.
We can pick you up somewhere or?
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll meet you over in Union Town.
Okay.
On our way.
Okay, yep, just let me know and, and what time does that start, 8, 9?
I think it starts at 9, from what I remember, so, so we can leave and get there a little early.
Okay.
They have coffee and refreshments and you kind of meet some of your counterparts while you're doing that.
Perfect, perfect. Anything else, anyone?
No.
Nothing for me.
And I'm still working on that report for down.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
And I may have to call you and pick your brain a little bit on that.
Don't expect much out of this.
I'll get a little bit out of it, so anyhow, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Morning, Rebecca.
Good morning. Good morning, Bourbon County Board of Commissioners. Here's our income and expenses sheet from 2019, which is, was a somewhat normal year for us. If I'd like to pass that to you. And I'd like to ask your permission to remove my mask as long as I'm staying appropriate distance from everyone.
Good for me, yeah.
Thank you.
Easier to hear you.
Yeah. 50 years. The S E K Multi-County Health Department has been serving the residents of Bourbon County as their local health department for the last 50 years. In 1971, after the health departments of Allen, Anderson, Bourbon, Lynn, and Woodson Counties served as a health planning organization for the state, an agreement was signed by the counties which formed the S E K Multi-County Health Department. The county commissioners could see the benefit of the organization and how it saved their county's money and also allowed for a balance of perspectives from policymakers, medical professionals, and the public. Lynn County has since left the multi-county department, which has resulted in the four-county configuration. S E K Multi-County Health Department is made up of four county health departments, Allen, Anderson, Bourbon, and Woodson. We share one medical director, one health officer slash administrator, a regional public health emergency preparedness coordinator, an accountant, and a billing clerk. Each office has at least one nurse and a clerk. We have one home visitor that covers Allen and Anderson Counties and one that covers Bourbon and Woodson Counties. We also have a nurse that is the WIC coordinator and we have a dietitian. We have hired a second nurse in Bourbon County office this last year who has assisted with our other county COVID-19 responsibilities as well. Due to efforts still needed for the pandemic, we have been able to maintain three temporary staff to assist where needed. Public health is a specialty all its own. Public health has many more trainings that are required than the average healthcare job. Trainings range from disease investigation and control to FEMA and incident command to vaccine, vaccines for children program to packaging and shipping of dangerous goods. We have a wide range of knowledge and expertise in many different areas. S E K Multi-County Health Department partners with many organizations and entities in Bourbon County, the surrounding counties, our region, and at the state level. We also have worked extensively with some organizations in Missouri over the last year. These partnerships and friendships have been very beneficial to us through the years and throughout this pandemic. We try to maintain a well-balanced give-and-take relationship with our partners. The Bourbon County Health Department currently provides 67 types of services to the public, many of which are at no cost. These fall under family planning, can be healthy screenings, school physicals, immunizations, adult physicals, blood pressure and glucose checks, hearing and vision screenings, DCF referrals, MCH home visitor, breastfeeding education, STD testing and treatment, and lab draws. We travel to many off-site clinics to provide immunizations and physicals for children and adults. Many of our services are at times provided in clients' homes. Other services which are provided that are at no cost to the public that stand out are disease investigations and contact tracing. That's something you've heard all year long. Health officer services such as review of plans for schools and long-term care facilities, recommendations related to isolation and quarantine, creation of isolation and quarantine orders, rabies investigations, review and investigation of nuisance calls and other public health hazards, provision of general medical, nutritional, immunization, and other information provided to all callers to the health department. Technical assistance to medical and non-medical providers, schools, daycares, industries, and other businesses related to PPE, preparedness planning, availability of COVID-19 vaccinations, technical assistance to long-term care facilities related to PPE, preparedness planning, and review of COVID-19 response plans. Assistance to other county health departments during disasters. Review of mask usage in Bourbon County and mask distribution. Mommy and me classes, breastfeeding support, referral of clients to other providers such as smoking cessation, depression, birth spacing planning, hearing, dental, and job sites, et cetera. Management of supplies received from federal and other state, other sources and transfer of those supplies such as hand sanitizer, masks, gowns to local medical and school providers in need. Education presentations for schools as well as being a member of the school health council and participation in those meetings. Educational presentations for long-term care facilities on bloodborne pathogens. On-call 24/7 for public health emergencies, especially with the pandemic. Each superintendent has a health officer's personal cell phone number. COVID-19 Recovery Drive. We applied for a grant and were able to have two recovery drives where we provided food and supplies to Bourbon County residents in need. We were blessed to partner with many businesses who help make the recovery drives possible such as Value Merchandisers, G N W Foods, Walmart, Dollar General, and also several community members and community partners. We participate in health fairs and offer our conference room to local organizations such as LAPC for meetings, training such as Love and Logic parenting classes, and CPR. January 2020. S E K Multi-County Health Department started planning for the impending pandemic by meeting with regional and local partners regarding information K D H E and the CDC were issuing. We began studying, training, and preparing for our role in the global pandemic. We began educating the public by way of newspaper, internet, Facebook, radio, flyers, and also participated in numerous educational and informational meetings with department heads of many different entities. K D H E provided guidance and support to the local health departments as well as regulations for isolation and quarantine. That set the stage for the expectations for the local health departments. And S E K Multi-County Health Department has held strong to these regulations to pull our counties through this pandemic. We've worked with our schools, long-term care facilities, businesses, colleges, and community organizations, just to list a few, on their mitigation and reopening plans as well as contact tracing within their facilities. COVID-19 investigations and contact tracing took most of our days for an extended period of time. Many times, it had us working evenings, nights, and weekends to make sure everyone's needs were met. Our own family life was put on hold for about nine months or more as we dealt with COVID-19 related issues. During the fall, Bourbon County, or in Bourbon County, we pushed through and administered 619 flu vaccines and did 21 off-site flu clinics along with everything else we were doing. On December 7th, Bourbon County's active case count rose to 152 active cases, a dramatic increase from prior to Thanksgiving. We were all exhausted by this point, but we knew we had to keep going. Later in the fall, we began preparing for mass vaccination clinics and what those would look like. We reached out to the Fort Scott City Commissioners and staff who helped us secure a site for these large clinics for Bourbon County. We were able to get many volunteers, businesses, community members who were willing to help us out because of all their volunteer work and partnerships we have, we have, and new ones we formed over the last year. Every COVID-19 vaccine clinic was a success and at no cost to the public. S E K Multi-County Health Department wanted to ensure that our school staff were also being vaccinated. So, we transferred 600 doses of our Moderna COVID-19 to S E K, or C H C S E K to vaccinate the schools, employees, while we were vaccinating healthcare workers and the elderly. To date, S E K Multi-County Health Department has administered 2,351 COVID-19 vaccines in Bourbon County. S E K Multi-County Health Department will continue providing until there is no longer a need. On January 21st, Governor Kelly recognized me as a public health hero in Kansas. I do not consider myself at all a hero. I appreciate the recognition, but that tells me that my staff and I are doing something right. We have followed K D H E's guidelines, state law, and recommendations by our medical director. We have taken a more conservative approach to the pandemic and have seen less cases than other counties that did not. We have done the best that we can do with what we are given and managed to stay afloat and not given up when many have. If you do a comparison of funding for the health departments across the state, S E K Multi-County Health Department asks for very little from Bourbon County. There have been talks of Bourbon County looking into contracting with an F Q H C for public health. One county health department, one, in Kansas, is run by an F Q H C, and that county provided approximately $666,000 this last year to that F Q H C to run it. Looking at surrounding counties' annual funding for health departments, Lynn County provided $189,000 this year, Crawford $556,000, Franklin $423,000, Coffee $371,000, Cherokee $108,000. Up until this last year, Bourbon County provided $80,750 per year to S E K Multi-County Health Department to provide public services in Bourbon County. Our organization hadn't seen an increase in 12 years, up until last year. Our staff are employed by our organization. We carry our own insurance. We own our own buildings and apply for grants through K D H E that help aid our services we provide. Bourbon County residents need a health department that have expertise in their field and are prepared for public health situations as they arise. One they can count on for their children's needs and family services and one they've come to trust for health-related questions and family support over the years. Our four counties are stronger together. We, and we built Bourbon County Health Department to provide a sturdy leg to our organization. S E K Multi-County Health Department wishes to remain the public health service provider in Bourbon County. I cannot speak for the commissioners of Allen, Anderson, or Woodson, but do know I have no outstanding complaints or issues that are holding them back from continuing on with S E K Multi-County Health Department as their county's public health service provider. Bourbon County Board of Commissioners. S E K Multi-County Health Department ask that you continue to allow us to be the, excuse me, to be the public health service provider for Bourbon County. Look at how far we have come in 50 years. With your continued support, just think of how much more we can accomplish together for our residents of Bourbon County in the years to come. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Rebecca. So, gentlemen, you want to have a little bit of explanation about the contract from Mr. Meeks?
He was standing right here.
He's around, Justin.
So, Rebecca, pre-pandemic, I know COVID changed everything over the last year, but pre-pand, so forget about COVID. It's going to hopefully go away. It's never going to go away, but... What do you, what would be your main thing in Bourbon County? Children, helping kids, doing immunizations?
Our main?
Two years ago, what were you, what?
What were we doing mainly?
Yes, in Bourbon County, your main focus.
Well, all those things she listed. I had to read all those things.
I mean, a lot of...
Between adults and children, I mean, we offer services to both ages. And you know labs, that we're drawing labs. There's many services we're doing to different age groups all the time. And I think that's what people don't realize, that that's why she read off as many as she did. That was before even COVID.
Well, and that's why I'm asking the question, because I don't think people understand that, you know, are you just sitting out there on Horton one day a week doing nothing? I mean, I think, I'm not criticizing you. I'm trying to get you to say that, so...
No, and I mean, that's, that's why I read all of that. And I mean, like I said, 67 services that we provide plus all of those other ones that I listed.
On a daily basis?
Well, you don't provide every service on a daily basis.
I understand that, but...
It's sometimes seasonal. Sometimes it's a seasonal thing, just like flu shots.
Mm-hmm.
And, and children's immunizations, they got kindergarten round out, school shots. They're seasonal.
Sure.
And, and our business runs kind of on that.
Also, just a second. Also, they provide like for Rocky Mountain disease investigation and stuff like that, and that's your, I mean, it could be year-round.
Like spring or summer, even the fall?
When the pool opens, there's careful vector. There's many different diseases we're investigating. I, I don't think anybody really realizes that, that's going on behind the scenes to make sure our community's safe.
You're also part of the emergency management team.
Right.
I did visit with a few limited, at the public, and their only question was they'd like to see you open on Fridays. I don't know if you can do that staff-wise.
And you know what? Their decision was made on go and the fact that we actually, we were not servicing or allowing the public to our services near as much because their hours were real limited when I started.
I figured, yeah.
And that's why we went to the decision to be open earlier in the day so people can come to our facility before they go to work, during the lunch hour when they, they have off and after hours when they get out of work.
Yeah.
And that's why our hours were extended the way they were.
I understand.
Because we actually offer a greater opportunity for people to visit our facility than if we just went back to normal hours, narrow hours, and opened to Friday.
We're open from 7 to 5:30 with a 30-minute lunch break.
And that's great. I mean, you can go before or after work, so...
So, one of the things I didn't hear was your interaction with the nursing homes and the assisted living during this pandemic. It's my understanding that we were heavily involved with, with those organizations for, for monitoring and helping through the COVID crisis, correct?
I did mention that twice.
Or maybe I just missed it.
Yeah, I mentioned it twice.
Okay, well, anyway, that's, that was something that, that stood out to me when we had our conversations throughout the year.
Yeah, and that's something that's ongoing because they are having to test their, their residents and staff on a regular basis, and we are in communication with them usually several times a week, if not more.
So, your hours are Monday through Thursday?
Monday through Thursday, 7 to 5:30.
Did you have a question, Justin? He just walked in back there.
I'll catch him here in a minute.
Okay.
He's, he's back there now.
Yeah.
Can you get Justin for a second?
Yes, Mr. President.
So, you, you got anything that you can add to, to our contract on, on with the S E K?
It's the same contract since 1971.
And you know what the length of it is?
If, if we were going to give notice to non-renew, it has to be done in May, and it's a year, it's a year.
So, we don't have to do anything? We don't give notification?
It's, it's been in place forever.
Okay, very good.
Nearly 50 years, so...
All right, thank you.
But we don't need a motion or anything?
I don't suggest changing it.
Yeah, we don't have, no, it doesn't seem like we have to.
I don't think we should change it.
Okay, agreed. Thank you, Rebecca.
Is there... Yeah, never mind. It's good.
Well, you all have my number.
Uh, well, I use it frequently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For helping the public out.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Alex, hand everybody something.
See you later. You going, you going to go to, you going to go to Yates Center? Okay, great. Same trip, down the snow.
I'm sorry?
Dave Brock, Dave Flippin. Major.
Yeah, I've met you many times.
And as you guys...
I'm gonna get rid of that.
Too damn honored to be here today.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. You guys are a great group.
I'm glad I was here.
Keep us, keep us really entertained.
Yeah.
That's just my stuff, I guess.
Yeah.
I won't kill you, too.
I told him that argument, he calls me every day.
Does he?
Just to pick up.
Good to see you.
He said, "Take care."
All right.
It's a bigger place, man.
Oh, man, you're crazy. I went to KC yesterday, it was a pretty nice trip.
Yeah.
The weather was beautiful.
Yeah.
Ate a canary bread dinner off of 435.
Well, good. Nice, wasn't it?
My old...
Certainly has gotten better.
Where's the board?
Um, we learned other things today.
Yeah, and you're right.
It's easy to pick up outside because they need pieces of...
This is Scott Shelton back there.
He's gonna take next.
Anybody here who's always here?
I know, I know, it's kids.
Well, I don't know that either.
She's planning.
I, I am pleased.
Good morning, gentlemen.
I asked that, be afraid of dogs, kind of let it live in.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Hang on for a minute, I'm, I'm making a call.
No problem.
There's Clint.
Hey, right there.
Sit around, call.
Morning, Scott.
Good morning.
Yeah, we've had a little discussion.
Yeah, it's been several months ago, and so that just kind of tells you how long this has been going on. Y'all should have a, the copy that you have emailed to you is incorrect, you should have a, a correct copy of the written request in front of you now. So, basically, I'm here today representing several residents of the, what has been known as the Country Hills subdivision, or subdivision that lies just north of Redfield. It's important to note that we are outside of the Redfield city limits. My grandfather started the subdivision back in the late 70s. He installed all the infrastructure, and part of that included a sewer system. It was a Goon system, small system at that time. He operated that clear up until about 1998. In 1998, the city of Redfield received a loan from the USDA to provide a septic system to, or sewer system to the city of Redfield. Part of that was that they would put in a pump station with our system and provide sewer for our subdivision. With that became, was a contract, since we do not have any representation inside the city, the contract was signed between the residents of the subdivision and the city, and its sole purpose was to maintain that the rates for the subdivision would remain the same as the rates for the city. It's a 40-year contract, which is the same as the length of the loan is. So, everything went fine, it was $18 per hookup per month for, since 98, clear up until 2019. In 2018, Clarence Gus became mayor of Redfield. So, one of the first things he did, among many other things, is he decided the sewer rates needed to increase, which I understood because it had been $18 a month forever. So, in 90, I'm sorry, let's see. So, in 2019, he raised the rates to $30 a month plus 750 per person in your home, which was kind of odd, it's kind of an odd rate structure, so this includes infants, this includes children and adults. So, every person in your home is an additional 750 per month. In 2019, they changed that, the city was, went up to 36 plus $8 per person, and the subdivision went to 44 plus $8 per person. So, we, the subdivision is now paying 20% more.
So, per person is, is there any exceptions, or is it just, just everyone in your household?
Correct.
Okay.
Includes infants, children, adults, everyone, everyone in your household. And then in 2021, we received a letter again, the city remained the same at 36 plus 8 per person, and the subdivision again increased another 20%, so it's 5170 plus $8 per person. So, an example, my family have four, for a year, we were paying $1,004.60. To give a comparison, the city of Fort Scott, which has a state-of-the-art sewer treatment facility, is somewhere between 30 and 40 for the average residence, so we were paying quite a bit more. In 2019, when the rates increased, we inquired about it. Initially, the, the response was that it was due to increased costs and that they wanted to pay the loan off faster. They wanted to make two payments per year instead of the required one. They said that they didn't have any money in the sewer account, you know, that they didn't have money to make repairs, maintenance, so on and so forth. So then, when they increased the rates and then increased the rates of the subdivision, we inquired again, what's, what's going on? So then, the reply was that, well, it costs more to operate the sewer in the subdivision than it does the sewer in town. Now, their sewer system is made up of two pumps, they're both very similar, one is at the subdivision, one is in town. So, I said, you know, the, the contract does not allow for that anyway, but in the interest of trying to work with them, I said, I'd like to see an expense breakdown of this. They provided a simple typed-up sheet with several numbers on it with no, there's no supporting documentation, there is nothing to substantiate, and the numbers just pointed in by sense. So, then we started looking at, well, you know, you're saying there's no money in the account, you're saying you're behind paying the USDA, so I contacted the USDA, I talked to Jeff Fisher at the state level, he's over the state USDA office, and I asked him several questions, he was super helpful with everything, and said, well, no, they're not behind paying, you know, their USDA loan or anything like that. So, I said, okay, well, how much money's in the sewer account at the city? Well, they didn't really want to tell us. So, we attended a city council meeting, and during the council meeting, of course, they read the finances and they have $20,000 in the account, but then later on in the meeting, they talk about how they're way behind paying sewer rates and this and that. So, we said, okay, you're in violation of the contract, you know, we have a contract, it's black and white, what can we do to, to work this out? We need to figure this out and get back where we're in agreement with the contract. Well, then they quit talking to us. They won't, they won't respond to us, they won't try to work with us, we've been, you know, the USDA offered to provide what they call a similar system survey, they look at similar systems, look at the rates of those, and compare to what we're paying now. They, they won't do it. I said, well, how'd you come up with your rates? They won't tell us, that's just something they've come up with out of the blue, basically, with no substantiating documentation or rate studies of any kind. So, this continued, this back and forth, and we've got to the point now where the last meeting we attended, they said, you can talk to our lawyer. Okay, so we got a lawyer, tried to talk to their lawyer, I spent several thousand dollars on a lawyer at this point with no response from them, they won't return any requests for information, they won't return any questions, anything. So, we've kind of come to an impasse. So, I guess this is why I'm here today, is because several of the residents would like to install septic systems to disconnect. In preparation for that, I had a contractor come out, look at our different sites, at least the ones in my family's, said, this is what we'd like to do, do we have room to do this? He spent a couple hours measuring, looking, come back and said, yeah, we can put in systems on these sites. I talked to the sewer inspector, Gail, he was fine with it, he didn't have a problem with it, we talked to some people at the appraiser's office, they seemed to say, as long as you guys say it's okay, they're okay with it. So, that's kind of where we've come at today.
So, the footprint would fit your requirements for a real area, a septic tank, is that one acre, two acres?
Well, that's, that's where we come into the waivers, I guess. So, the waivers, there's two parts of them, one part of the sewer, I'm sorry, the sanitation code 2-4.2 says that any residents within 400 feet of a public wastewater system must connect to that wastewater system.
Was that KSA number?
This is off of your Bourbon County sanitation code.
Okay.
It looks like 98 was the last time it was updated. Obviously, for obvious reasons, I mean, we'd, we'd have to have a waiver for that. The other one is, the minimum requirement is a one-acre lot. Some of those houses sit on a little over an acre, some of those houses sit on a little less than an acre. So, but, like I say, the, I had the contractor come out, look at it, measured it, and he's confident that, that he can get those required systems in the space provided. At this point, we're kind of running out of options.
Justin, should you comment, so he's talking lawyer and lawyer here, or?
He's represented by counsel, so I, I could talk to his lawyer, I mean, I could address the commission, because I can't, I can't talk to him.
Right. My comment, of course, the 400 feet, if we was wanting to do amendment, we've got to go through the state because K D H E accepted our codes as written, and we would have to submit a amendment to change the 400, and they would have to approve our plan.
Right, because if we, if we didn't force the 400 feet, that'd be applicable to every sewer system in the county.
Yeah. So, if we change that, we gotta, we gotta do several things.
And that's in our septic code.
Yeah, just a couple things, obviously, we don't, you have no authority over the city of Redfield and the subdivision with regards to that contract. I mean, obviously, they're talking about possible breaching that contract, you know, either the city or the subdivision itself, so, you know, I've said this a lot, you guys don't have really a dog in that fight, I mean, you really can't go there, I mean, that's, that would be litigated if that came, came about. You know, if they filled out the application, you're willing to do a variance on the acreage that has been done, but it's really close to an acre, you know, .87, .91, I mean, I know there's some variances that have been done in the past, you know, with regards to the 400, I think Commissioner Harris is completely correct, you have to go through and have that sanitation code changed. I don't think you have the ability to necessarily do that, but there's a lot of pieces to be put in place before, I think, as county counselor, I would suggest making those variances, we need to look at the contract, we need to look at, you know, how it was formed, you know, where the location of the property is within the county, you know, we have no authority over a municipality, so we got to make sure we're not stepping on any legal toes, to make sure you guys don't come back and have civil liability for getting involved in a civil suit for breach of contract.
Agreed.
And I can provide you copies of the contract, I can provide you any information you need, I would also like to point out...
And I have no issues talking with his, with his attorney or the city of Redfield's attorney, too, just to maybe see where, where this process is, and, you know, obviously, the city of Redfield falls under the same cora and coma issues that the county commission does, so obviously, if someone would make a cora request in writing to the municipality, they have to provide that information, so, you know, hopefully, the, the information's disseminating correctly, where we can get that information and try to figure out what they're starting to put, Clint's gonna be put in an awkward position to say yes or no if there's possible litigation for breach of contract.
We need to, we need to look at it ourselves to make sure that we're not stepping on any other municipality or ordinance that we're not aware of.
Right, yeah, and if you instruct me, I will do my due diligence to come back to you maybe in two weeks and talk to all the attorneys and see where we are with what's happening.
Yeah, I mean, the, the big issue is that we are not inside the city of Redfield, so, you know...
I'd entertain a motion to allow Justin to look into the...
Can I, I'd like to point out on, on section 2-13.0, it does give you guys the ability to grant exceptions when determined that such waiver does not and will not impair the probability of the groundwater or otherwise endanger the health and safety of the individuals involved and/or the general public, so...
And just worrying the general public part, you know, a subdivision has some precedent with the remaining, with the county, I know there's some other possible housing developments going in that would be not in city limits, right on the skirt, right of Fort Scott, and not having that acre to have those sanitation things could cause problems down the road because if you have 15 houses in one line or, you know, 180 acres and they have them all on one street, I can think of one street specifically that could cause problems.
And I know that we just went through this, that there's a different rate for people living in the county that's hooked up to the city sewer versus who, who are in the city limits.
Well, you know, contractually, and I've never seen the contract, but contractually, you can contract for anything, it just depends on what the, the language of the contract says, I mean, so this fine gentleman basically said, look, they're in violation because it's got to be the same as the city, well, you know, that's for their lawyers to handle, but...
Scott, do you have a copy of the contract?
Yes, sir.
Could you provide that to us?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make that motion. I'm gonna make that motion to request county counselor Justin Meeks to get involved and review the contract with Mr. Shelton and the housing addition out there north of the city of Redfield and report back to the commissioners.
Yeah, if I can clarify that, I'm not going to deal with really the city of Redfield at all, it's going to be the property located within the county property.
Okay. Very good. So, here's a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, Kendall?
Have you got the document for Tri Valley?
Yeah.
It has, we have a 55,000, it's a draft that we've got.
Right. So, this is not the first time that we've, we've had, been requested by Tri Valley to sign an agreement for services, we did it last year. And if you want to read it over, you can, but it's the same one as we had last year. We fund them at $55,000 a year, and that's what this contract has in it, is, is $55,000 a year.
Yeah, I got a copy of that in email, so...
Yeah, me, too, so, all I need is an...
Is that for 2021?
It's for 2021.
I remember, so...
So, all I need is a motion to sign the agreement for services for Tri Valley.
Make a motion to, for Chairman O'Hare to sign, sign the agreement with Tri Valley.
Take all three of our signatures. There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. There you go. Okay, last week, we had a discussion on Bitco accepting the, the charge of operating and assets of B Works, so we're, we're at that point that we should make a motion to, to make that happen. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we transfer the B Works. Need to say something first?
Yes, just a quick, it's not, it's, it would not be ownership of that property, it would be...
No, 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 it's transfer, just the operational portion of this, to transfer the operational portion of the B Works organization to Bitco, and that includes having possession, but not ownership of the material assets, which at that time, we will, in December 31st, 2021, we will revisit that issue. There's a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I've had a, I've had a short break.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I just passed it back to him.
It's...
Thank you.
You leaving this Friday?
I'm ready, too.
I'm ready.
I'm good, how are you guys?
I'm good.
This is...
If the light's on, it's on.
Yes, just a quick, it's not, it's, it would not be ownership of that property.
No, 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 it's transfer just the operational portion of this. To transfer the operational portion of the B Works organization to Bitco. And that includes having possession, but not ownership of the material assets, which at that time, we will, in December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, we will revisit that issue. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I've had a, I've had a short break.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I just passed it back to him.
It's-
Thank you.
You leaving this Friday?
I'm ready to. I'm good, how are you guys?
I'm good.
If the light's on, it's on.
What assets are they?
Um, I have to get Justin. I don't, I could tell you about four or five things, but-
Mark, are you getting a lot of callbacks for the Rider group?
No. No, so far I've been contacted by one family, which is two individuals, actually Barbara and Rass. Mr. Ritter? Mr. and Mrs. Ritter? I, I aired, I put out on Facebook on three different spots the wrong email address. I thought my email address was search@bourboncountyks.org. It's BB search. So I corrected that and knows, and so since I corrected it, which was just a couple of days ago, Monday. So I, I know that there's at least four or five people. Do you know of other people that are interested?
No, I haven't really. Okay, thank you. I'd like, I'd like, uh-
Mrs. McCoy.
I'd like Mary Pemberton.
Not my wife.
But Mary, but Mary won't give me, so. So because-
I think she contacted me, and then she said, I'm way too busy, I cannot do it.
And I'm, I'm getting close to way too busy, but, um-
No, no, I understand.
Not, um, and I'm a person who has good ideas. So if, you know, if we need to-
Do you know my number? You can call me at any time if, if I'm so involved with it. If I am to be involved with it. I mean, I, I, uh- Thank you. Yes, Commissioner.
For dollars?
Yeah, yes. Yeah. I, I like to double my salary by a hundred percent, so a hundred percent times zero.
I'll throw a dollar right out of my pocket.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Since, since there's been an issue with the code coding, I'm trying to stay away from it. Not, not easy. Sorry, I need to extend the date.
I'm getting all fired, struck out fired.
It has not been discussed. What, what subgroups were-
Okay, thank you.
... the city has- So we have to go back to the minutes of the meeting to determine what was said in the county constitution. I know there was discussion about six months ago.
Right, even. We haven't made a, a project.
So like one, it could be an advisory board, just kind of overall sub, subgroups only need the, uh-
No, it might be ordinance, this, that, or, you know, so they're in line, you know. Now you get more than-
Different topics for different boards.
Yeah. If you get quite confused, and you know, well, the city set it up, there's a specific purpose. Lake advisory board, streets advisory board, zoning, zoning, uh-
Tourism.
Design, tourism, yes, yeah. So everybody has a legal- No, 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 they don't have to.
They don't have to, they are learned ones.
Yeah. But they're only there for advice. It's still snowing, I think. So. Getting dressed for it.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yes, you too.
Is that right? We have the annual change from the issues that we flipped again. Here. Aye? Aye? Well, it's for that here. I said I'll call right now. Actually, when you look at, when you look at that, it was, they're money, they, they serve the task. Well, they only got a couple of few things left to do. I'm unable to find international, it has to be in, it did, no.
Okay. I'm just trying to kill a little time, guys.
Yep.
Okay, we're at the elected official's comment.
Yep, I don't know.
So.
We're at the elected official's comment.
Do you guys hear me?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment also. Everyone that, that attended the training last week on the, on the coma training, we're not required to even be televising or anything on these.
Yeah.
And the other part of that is that if people have subjects to discuss that should be on the agenda, please put them on the agenda. We don't want to go back to where we were before. And if you want to speak, please call Kendall and have yourself put on the agenda. It's not a difficult thing to do. We're open to anyone, we're open to the public, so, so let's make sure we, we stay with what we started to design.
I agree.
And really, we should be here in person to address the commission, if at all possible. Okay, go ahead.
Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. This is Bill Martin. In the office with me is, uh, Senator Sheriff Cole. Um, here, speaking to you today is that here in the last several months, we have been awarded several cars during forfeiture proceedings. And it has been discussed that somebody, just a couple of cars, maybe one or two cars, the deputies are requesting that they be used as undercover surveillance type vehicles so that they can assist in their investigations that they're doing. So I'm just bringing the, this to your attention, I'll be probably contacting K Camp, have them, uh, be placed on the fleet insurance so that the vehicles can be utilized for investigation.
So do we know what the cost would be?
Uh, very little to nothing. I mean, it's going to be very limited liability on it, just a very basic. And I'll bring that information to you here probably next week.
Okay. Very good. Questions?
Nope.
Nope.
All right.
Is there any questions or other concerns or issues you want to bring to my attention?
Nope.
Nope. Good.
Justin, Mr. Meeks.
I have three issues this morning, Commissioners. They're not really issues. One is a suggestion, and two of them are just kind of FYIs. The tax sales, we've got the, the first fifty pretty much ready to go. We're going to be sending out the petitions and the summonses to those individuals. The collection rate, I think, has been pretty good this time around. We were, have a lot of people that are paying. You know, obviously, we're in unusual times, which is exciting for our county. I had a conversation just yesterday about the appraisals and the, the property values in Bourbon County. And really, what's happening is the lack of inventory for houses that are on the market. And as fast as they're selling, it's, it's, I don't think it's ever happened in my lifetime. I know that. And then I'm getting close to fifty. So the reason I bring that up is, is that I think the title company has been doing an amazing job of trying to get us the abstracts as fast as they can. We did receive a couple yesterday, but they've been slowly rolling in for a good reason. You know, if there's a reason for a delay, if, this is the one you want, is that the market is literally on fire. That's the best way to describe it. So as the abstracts come in, we'll get, make, check with Patty's office to make sure that they have not paid or have paid, and then we'll move forward on them. But we do have fifty that have been accepted by the courts, and we're going through the process of getting everybody noticed up. So just kind of give me an update on that. I was really hoping for a sale, you know, into June. If we do have one at the end of June, it's going to be a small sale, but we're still going to have that opportunity to, you know, have a sale. I think most likely, we're going to end up having two this year, just because of what's happening with the housing market, which is a good thing.
Well, it's kind of amazing.
Great problem.
Kind of amazing because this happened, happened nationwide. I know my brother has a property down in Arizona, duplex. And he said, when he bought it two years ago, and even last year, there was a thousand, beginning last year, thousand properties on, on the rolls. He says it's less than a hundred now.
Well, I know there's, you know, I know, I've got a couple of interesting stories firsthand that, you know, people are paying a hundred and eighty dollars per square foot to build new, which, wow. I mean, that's just wild to me.
From about a hundred, a hundred and fifteen, maybe a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, and I know some people that literally didn't even have their houses on the market, that they've sold their houses in the last, you know, couple of months. So it's just a very unique time for our community, and it's exciting because there's a lot of people that are purchasing homes and buying them. So I was contacted by, I mean, at Apex, you know, Jayhawk Wind. Yesterday, the, the pilot check has arrived. Patty does have it in her possession. It's for four hundred and eight thousand. I can get the contract number out, but I do need to know what the commission wants to do to have that deposited. We have a Jayhawk Wind account. There's the fifty thousand minus the engineering fees that are currently being spent. But obviously, I don't know budget-wise what you guys are going to do with that next year, but maybe just have, somebody have authority or give authority to Patty to go ahead and get that set up in an account.
Well, I think since we already have an account set up, it'd be probably a good place just, just to put it now. The only thing we're spending out of, out of that account is, is for the engineering side of this thing, anyway.
Yeah, I, I know that Frank has been used quite a bit, which is good. That's what we want, that's what it was there for.
That's right, and it's fifty thousand dollars that was allocated for that.
Yep.
So we should put it, Susan, right with it?
Yeah, I think it'd be easier to see how those dollars are being spent as a separate fund.
Just give Susan the authority to talk to Patty and get it set up. Okay. The third thing is kind of to have this maybe added to the agenda maybe in two weeks or even the first part of May, is to talk about the opportunity for the citizens of our, this is my opinion, all opinion here, all opinion. And I, I talked about this quite a bit, and I'm actually, you know, there are parts about the law that have always been intriguing to me, it's why I've done what I've done. You know, I, I enjoy the academic part on some levels and all, the level of just implementing legalese. And this is one of those questions that we got during the wind farm time, and I think with this new commission and some of the things that were made, comments that were made last year is it might be time to put the, the zoning and coding question on the ballot. And so I'd like to, at some point, maybe come in front of the commission a couple of weeks from now and, and have a, an hour set aside or two hours set aside to allow for people to just talk about it and have one of our open banter sessions, and then get direction from the commission on moving forward with putting it on the ballot or telling, not putting it on the ballot or just not making that decision now or saying, look, this is the reason why we're doing what we're doing. You know, obviously-
Two weeks?
Two to three weeks. I mean, I'm not putting any pressure on the election.
What's the timeline to get it on the ballot?
Well, there'd be, I, I've learned from Kendall, it's ninety days prior is what she'd like it, but I'd like to get it maybe sooner than that. So obviously, there's an election in November.
So we're going to go for three weeks then?
So probably three weeks, and then we can sit around and talk about that and see what your commission thinks about it. I mean, obviously-
Tell it out to the public.
Mm-hmm.
Let them know. So let me look at the data here.
And I'm not asking for the public to come in and say yes or no. I'm just asking for the public to come in and talk about what it looks like, what it could, what it could possibly envision, you know, the cost. So we got a really good breakdown of what the multi-county health board costs other counties. I mean, I can do the research to find out what a codes department and zoning department in other counties. I mean, I'll try to have all my ducks in a row to at least give some information.
So May the eleventh.
Sounds good to me.
But technically, during our discussion, it can be split. It can be zoning without codes.
Yes, absolutely.
Codes is building regulations, electrical regulations.
Right, yeah.
Zoning is land use.
Right. Yeah, and we can break it out. I mean, I'm, we can even do special use, I mean, just, just looking at what it looks like, having that. I mean, I think that we should give it to, I mean, my opinion is absolutely put something on the ballot and let the people decide.
I do, too. You know, if you're going to go that direction, people need to have input on that one. Kendall? Uh, May the eleventh, put it on the agenda for an hour?
Yeah, for, at the end. I mean, just from eleven to noon.
At the end of the agenda, put it on the, for discussion about zoning.
And if, if no one shows up or we, the, the conversation breaks down, it's almost budget season. So if you need an extra half hour for Susan or Kendall to start that, I mean, I know it's not June yet, but there's lots of things to talk about with the, the valuation and the pilot money, too, that you guys are probably going to have some pretty exciting news to think about for the next fiscal year.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I mean, finally, I mean, it's good news. I mean, hopefully, you know, the bill goes down and we get a quality of life increase, so.
Very good.
That's it on my end.
Hey, thanks, Justin. Public comment.
There's no one outside.
That's what I, that's what I said.
Thank you, and thank you very much.
Yeah, that's what I said.